Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic, one nation, under God, physical, verbal, and all.
Okay, welcome to our April 2nd council meeting. First order of business, I would like to remind you that if you speak in the microphones, speak in the microphones because if you're more than about four inches away, you're not getting picked up for those people at home. We have had some work done to the microphones, this is a good test, but we can't test it unless you are close to the microphone. So, we appreciate that. Roll call.
Counselor Tate?
Here.
Demas?
Here.
Zadi?
Here.
Chalada?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
West?
Here.
Alter?
Here.
Windorf?
Here.
Mayor Como?
Here. Counselors, first order of business, I would appreciate a motion to approve the revised agenda? No, we didn't revise the agenda. Imagine that! Okay, approval of the minutes from the City Council's special meeting minutes of March 14th, 2019, and the City Council meeting minutes of March 19th, 2019.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. This is going to bring us directly into our bid opening section of our agenda, the 2019 Overlay Project. Looks like we have two bidders. Bidder number one, Kilgore Companies LLC, doing business as Lewis &amp; Lewis, 370A Blairtown Road, Rock Springs, Wyoming. Bid bond is attached and the total bid, $1,037,360. Second bidder is Consolidated Paving and Concrete, and that's Ogden, Utah. Bid bond is attached, total bid, $1,035,548.20. That's good numbers there. These bids will be turned over to the Department of Engineering and Operations for review. Next item on our agenda is the appointment section of our agenda. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Mike Shaw to serve as our alternate first term of the Board of Adjustment. Counsel, Mike Shaw has stepped up to serve as alternate on the Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Demas?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Chalada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Ken Fortuna to serve first term Planning and Zoning Commission. Counsel, Ken Fortuna has stepped up to serve on Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Chalada?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Windorf?
Yes.
Tate? Demas?
Mayor Como, you have your appointment. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is going to bring us into the Presentations and Proclamations portion of our agenda. We have a busy night. The Presentations, oh, Presentations first, I'm sorry Danielle. To Write Love on Her Arms, Seventh Annual Run For It 5K, Danielle Thompson. See if that microphone's on when you get there.
Oh, yeah, totally. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Danielle Thompson. Some of you may know me, you may know my mom and my dad, David and April Thompson. If you do, I apologize. I'm here to talk about an organization very dear to my heart called To Write Love on Her Arms. It is a nonprofit dedicated to presenting hope and finding help for people struggling with depression, or sorry, depression, addiction, self-injury, and suicide. It exists to encourage, inform, inspire, and also to invest directly into treatment and recovery. Since its start in the year 2006, To Write Love on Her Arms has donated over, sorry, over $2.3 million directly into treatment and recovery, and has answered over 200,000 messages from over 100 countries. Since 2013, To Write Love on Her Arms has hosted its annual Run For It 5K, an event that started out as a way to connect with people in their community and share their mission spreading hope and finding help for those struggling with mental illness. Since then, the Run For It 5K has evolved from a single community race in Florida to thousands of people participating virtually in all 50 states and in countries all over the globe. This will be the third year for the race in Sweetwater County. Back in 2017, when I first hosted the 5K, I was still really struggling with the death of my brother, who died by suicide in 2013. Josh fought many, many demons in his short 23 years of life, and ultimately, depression, PTSD, anxiety, and other things that we'll never actually know drove him to take his own life. It was devastating, and it still is. I personally have struggled with depression and anxiety for many years, and I know that many of my friends and family have also. These are not things that you just see on TV or read about in the news. From a paper published by the Johns Hopkins University of Medicine, it's estimated that 26% of Americans age 18 and older, but 1 in 4 adults, suffers from a diagnosable mental disorder in a given year. Many people suffer from more than one diagnosable order at any given time. About 9.5% of American adults ages 18 and older will suffer from a depressive illness each year. These are just the reported cases. Most people do not have the resources, such as health insurance, or the financial means to go out and seek help. Many more don't seek help because of the stigma associated with reaching out and asking for that help. To Write Love on Her Arms aims to bring awareness to mental health and tear down that stigma and raise funding for those who cannot afford the help that they so greatly need. The Run For It 5K this year will be taking place at Western Wyoming Community College on Saturday, April 13th. Check-in will be from 11 o'clock in the morning to 11:45 in the morning. The race will begin at noon. For anyone who is concerned, this is not going to be like the first year. We are not outside where it is cold. We are inside. You can walk and you can run. We will have everyone come into the college through the Rushmore Gym entrance. We will have someone stationed there to lead you to the starting point. We do have a Facebook page for the event. If you go on Facebook and search for Run For It 5K, you should pop up with my page. It's kind of difficult to say a link. If you'd like, you can purchase a runner's pack, which will include this 2019 Run For It 5K shirt, states that there is a boldness in your breathing. It will also come with a runner's bib with a number and a little card that says, "This is what I'm running for." I do appreciate the council taking the time out of their night to let me speak and for bringing awareness of mental health to Sweetwater County. Any questions?
Counsel? Danielle, great job.
Thank you.
What a great and worthy cause. And I would suggest everybody get a team together Saturday, April 13th, at the college inside, so no complaints about cold, because it'll probably be snowing, even if it was in August, it'd be snowing, it seems like. 12 o'clock, correct?
12 o'clock is when it starts. We ask that you check in between 11 and 11:45.
Appreciate that.
I do have one thing to add. So, I've been doing physical therapy for my knee, and I've had the pleasure of getting to do physical therapy alongside with Chief Wamsley over here. And I don't think he can do it. I don't think he can actually complete the 5K. I don't think he can raise enough money. So, I think he needs a little bit of encouragement. Maybe Chief Pacheco, too.
We could, everybody bet to see if the chief could make the 5K.
We will have a donation jar, so we'll have two. One for Jim Can Do It, one for Jim Can't. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. I appreciate that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation to a group that's near and dear to my heart, served many years with this group of individuals. I see Lisa and Jody and Larry Fosman, and I see a lot of faces I probably shouldn't have, I don't know. And in the middle, some gorgeous daughter in the middle of mine that's helping out. So with that, it's good to be in an area that Boys and Girls Clubs are so active and supported by the community. And you guys do a just a fantastic job. If you ever get a chance, if you haven't been to the Boys and Girls Club, just wander by there and you'll see exactly why it's so needed in our community, and if it wasn't there, where these kids would be. So with that, from the office of the mayor, a proclamation. Whereas the young people of Sweetwater County are tomorrow's leaders, and many young people need professional youth services to help them achieve their full potential. And there are seven Boys and Girls Club organizations in Wyoming, including Boys and Girls Club of Sweetwater County, that serve more than 420 young people annually. And Boys and Girls Club instill young people with the self-confidence to believe they can succeed in anything they put their mind to, and stand at the forefront of efforts in the areas of academic success, healthy lifestyles, good character, and citizenship. And Boys and Girls Club organizations in Wyoming help ensure that young people have a safe, supportive place to spend time and will provide them with quality youth development programs. And the Boys and Girls Club of Sweetwater County will celebrate National Boys and Girls Club Week with some 4,000 clubs and over 2 million more children and teens nationwide. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare the week of April 8th through the 12th, 2019, to be Boys and Girls Club Week in the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And I encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and commending Boys and Girls Clubs in Wyoming for providing the young people of our communities with a comprehensive and effective youth development service. Congratulations, and I think you need a round of applause. You guys do a dang good job.
Your Honor, real quick, I want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for being such active participants every year with citywide cleanup. I can always depend on them to take an area of our city and get it spruced up. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Speaking of garbage, not trick you yet, I had a complaint yesterday morning of all the high school kids throwing garbage out their window and it ended up on the fence against the railroad from an individual that lived over there. And I assured her that we were having an upcoming citywide cleanup, and that we'd do our best to put that on the list, and if she wanted to get a team together, she was sure able to get a team together and contact us, and we'd make sure that we'd have her participate. And the next morning, she called me back and thanked me because all the garbage was gone. And all I could think of was, "My niece." But I'm thinking maybe it could have been, it could have been work restitution. She cleaned up the entire fence along the railroad, "Not one spot of garbage," she said. And she was extremely grateful, but she thought that I, as the mayor, had handled that. I would like to take that credit, but I did not, but I'm glad it's done, so. Yeah, citywide cleanup, which is?
May 18th.
May 18th.
Save the date.
Save the date. Okay. The next on our list is Sarcoidis Awareness Month, April 2019. Now, this is interesting because I had to do a little research and I was not aware of this, but this is a proclamation, whereas sarcoidis is a rare inflammatory disease that can affect almost any organ in the body and causes heightened immunity, a condition that results in an overreaction of the immune system resulting in damage to the body's own tissues. And sarcoidis is known to affect people of all ages, races, and genders. And the classic feature of sarcoidosis is the formation of granulomas, microscopic clusters of inflammatory cells that group together and interfere with organ functions. And sarcoidosis is often misdiagnosed or underdiagnosed with hard-to-detect biomarkers, often resulting in a high economic burden placed upon patients and family members due to numerous diagnostic tests and ongoing clinical observations and/or management. And there is still much to learn about sarcoidosis, but discovering the cause, improving treatment, and finding a cure are attainable goals with increased research and educational efforts. And those coping with the disease are commended for their efforts to promote awareness of sarcoidosis. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare the month of April 2019 to be Sarcoidosis Awareness Month in the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, which will be lit up with purple to bring awareness on Saturday, April 13th, 2019. We call upon all citizens, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their awareness of sarcoidosis and consider supporting research efforts to aid in finding a cure and improving treatment for this rare disease. That's amazing. I did not even know that existed, but it is there. So we have some work to do with purple lighting, but we're going to have to... Is someone here to receive the proclamation? Oh, there you are. Why don't you come down to the podium and tell us a little bit more about sarcoidosis? You'll fit right into our group.
Just send it this one, and it'll work. This one works?
That should work, yeah.
Well, I drove about seven and a half hours to be here. It's really easy for us to send emails and ask for proclamations, and nobody knows what it means. Nobody knows the word. When I was diagnosed, my doctor looked at me and said, "We're going to send you up. We think you have lung cancer." Okay, so that night I was dealing with it as best I could. I woke up from the surgery and he says, "Well, you don't have cancer, you have sarcoidosis." And I said, "Sarcoid, what?" And I didn't know what he meant. My doctor went to Google, and that's how we started doing things. Google said, "Oh, it's really nothing. It'll go away on its own." For 60%, of people, that actually happens. It does go away. 40% of us are multi-system. I'm multi-system. Neuro, pulmonary, and cardiac. I also have it in my bones and my nerves. So it's, you know, it's constantly causing me problems. They asked me in February if I would be an ambassador for Sarcoid for Wyoming, because I was one of the forgotten ones. You know, I live way out in Franny. My doctors didn't know anything. There's no programs around anywhere, and there's really not a drug for this. There's just not. And so when they asked me to be an ambassador, I went to Washington. You take a hermit into Washington, literally. And you know, I met Senator Barasso and I started going forward, and the goal for me is to spread sarcoidosis around through all of Wyoming. April 13th is our national light-up. Everybody's going to light up. I'm traveling through Wyoming, trying to get all the proclamations, trying to get this lit up. Two days ago, I was in the ER for TIA's. I'm 43 years old. I have a baby granddaughter. Never thought in a million years I'd be having mini-strokes, or heart problems, or anything else, just because I have a disease that nobody's ever heard of. So this is, that's why I drove seven and a half hours. I want a face. I want you guys to see there's people out here who are just like me, living their life, living on a ranch, doing whatever it is they're doing, and then they get hit with this, what is this thing called? And Wyoming has so many people in it, it's shocking, of patients who have it. In fact, we just found out one of the counties that's going to sign them, the mayor, his best friend passed away from it. And he's like, "I didn't even know that people knew about this." So we're really trying to get it out there, and that's, that's why I'm here.
Well, you definitely opened my eyes. I Googled it as well, just to see what, I'd never heard of this. But we appreciate the heads up and appreciate all you do, and surely wish the best for you, and glad that you made it here tonight, and have the time to and the energy to bring this to our attention.
I'm thankful for all the support that, you know, we can get. It's amazing. If you can light anything up purple, just send, I gave you everybody a card, just send a picture, and we're going to send it off national. I mean, we've got the Trade Center, we've got Niagara Falls, we've got things lighting up everywhere. Thank you very much.
Good. We'll get a picture.
Yeah.
Okay, item number four on our proclamation, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Who do we have here for this problem? Help? Yard?
Hello, my name is Melinda Boss, and I am the new executive director at the YWCA. I know I've stood before you in other roles with different hats, usually something small and furry in my hands. But this time, we're here to talk about a more serious subject, and I'm certainly honored to be sharing the month of awareness with sarcoidosis. I was trying to practice that. And so, April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And the reason we come forward is because this still is such a critical issue. If you look at statistics, nearly one in five Americans are raped at some point in their lifetime. This is a statistic that has stayed the same for years. We are trying our best to do prevention, to do education, as well as awareness. That is what the YWCA's Center for Family and Children's is there for. We are there to reach out to the victims when these happen, when this crisis happens, because 54% of sexual assault victims are between 18 and 34 years old. So this does tend to have a large proportion of our younger community. And again, 2/3 of assaults are committed by someone they know. So not only does this horrible tragedy happen, but it happens with someone that they thought and trusted. In 2018, CFC served 89 victims of sexual assault in Justice County. And so part of what we do every year is we try to bring out awareness. We try to do prevention work, because that is where the problem is really going to get solved, is beforehand, is teaching people understanding, is teaching appropriate methods, saying something when something's wrong, saying things when people make comments that are actually demeaning or depressing. When you're saying something to someone, having a friend go, "Dude, that is just so rude", can have such a powerful effect on changing behavior. And that is what's going to make the difference for sexual assault prevention, is to change the behavior, changing it in all the many small ways that you can have. So we are here to do proclamation. We have bracelets for everyone. I do believe, I counted it out, that I can get everyone up front with a bracelet. We wear these all during the month of April, as the color teal tends to be the color associated with sexual assault awareness. We also have a race, and unfortunately, we are not doing it indoors. We are going to cross our fingers and try our best to do it outdoors. We have done it in the snow, and we have done it in the sun. It sounds like a Dr. Seuss thing. Yes, the sun or snow, it does not matter. And it's actually called Run With the Badges. And so we have representatives from all the law enforcement and fire department communities that come and run with us for this race. And that race is on the 27th of April, starts at 8:00 AM at the Family Rec Center. So, if you are like me and are not in any way going to run a 5K or 10K, in fact, would laugh if we tried that again. Haven't done that in a long time. But, we have a walk as well, so you're more than welcome to come walk with us. Rain or snow, we can do this. We are Wyoming. This is what we're used to. So I want you to be, if there's anything we can do to help, if you would like us to give more information, if you have someone you know that's probably gone through this and would like some help, give us a call. We'd be more than happy to help. So I'm going to walk up and give each one of you a bracelet.
And while Melinda's doing that, I'm going to read the proclamation. Proclamation, whereas the City of Rock Springs recognizes the importance of designating a time devoted to increasing public awareness of sexual assault and support of agencies providing services to victims of sexual assault, and volunteers and service providers in our community work to provide a continuum of care and service to sexual assault survivors through a 24-hour hotline, counseling, support groups, advocacy, medical care, and education. And the YWCA Center for Families and Children promotes the prevention of sexual assault by offering educational presentations to schools, churches, and civic organizations, as well as professional training in collaboration with medical, mental health, law enforcement, educators, and criminal justice personnel regarding sexual assault issues. And the YWCA Center for Families and Children requests public support and assistance as we hold forth a vision of community free from sexual violence. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare the month of April 2019 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And I commend and the observance of all citizens by urging each other to learn what can be done to combat sexual violence and to offer prevention measures and support and services to survivors. Teal bracelets will be available throughout the community to wear in support of awareness of sexual assault during the month of April, and the Sexual Assault Awareness Run Walk with the badges will be held on April 27th, 8:00 AM, at the Family Rec Center in Rock Springs, Wyoming. We appreciate that. I can tell you, you can't turn on the news where you don't see an issue that's not related. I can tell you, you can't turn on the news where you don't see an issue that's not related to sexual assault in some fashion. It's concerning, so we appreciate what you do. Counselors, question?
Thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you guys for coming. And this is gonna bring us to our petitions section of our agenda. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to address the council on any issue whatsoever? This would be your time to do that. Any issues? Hearing none, I'm going to close the petition section and move on to the council committee and board reports, counselors. We have number one, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting minutes of February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and two, the Main Street Board meeting minutes of March eleventh, two thousand nineteen. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve those and put on file, but I'd also like to add a couple.
Okay.
Just a little brief point of interest is Chief Wamsley and I attended the Airport Board Retreat and I found that to be very informative. And all the information that I received, I put in our office area. So if any of you would like to look at it, a lot of information that was presented to us. And then also, in addition to giving you the day for citywide cleanup, I just wanna let everyone know, I have ordered three thousand five hundred orange bags from YDOT. And sadly, we're probably gonna fill all of them again this year. So I need a lot of helping hands on that day to volunteer and let's clean up the city. We got company coming at the beginning of this summer for the rodeo finals, so we wanna make it look as nice as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to donate gloves. I hear you're in need of gloves. Just bring them through the chamber. Any particular jerseys?
Just cheap ones. Yeah. They work.
So we do have a motion to approve the council committee and board reports as amended and placed on file. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed.
Your Honor.
Councilman West?
I could, Councilwoman Wendorf kind of beat me to the punch, but I have an update as well, as you all might recall.
Okay.
You placed me on the specific purpose tax joint powers board and we met the day after our last meeting and I just kinda wanted to keep everyone apprised as to what's going on there. The audit for that should be wrapped up this month. They're anticipating no funds are remaining in the Wells Fargo account, all of which have been transferred over to the county treasurer. It's agreed to, I guess, disperse those to the necessary municipalities, which was supposed to have gone out, I believe, yesterday, or Monday, on the first. Those excess funds, there is the amount of six point one million, which could change slightly with interest between the last meeting and now. Of that portion, Rock Springs received two million nine hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars sixty-seven cents. So just wanted to give you kind of a heads up on that. There is some ongoing debate in regards to House Bill ninety-five, which then became Enrolled Act Thirty-Seven, which Representative Stith introduced, as you all might recall, regarding how the excess funds can be expended. And just gonna read you quickly some brief notes out of the master resolution that was originally approved back when the Sixth Penny was approved, which states that all excess tax funds and interests thereon shall be used for construction, operation, equipment, and maintenance of the specified projects. The Enrolled Act says if the resolution fails to specify how these funds will be expended, and goes on to explain that further. So I have passed this over to Mr. Beckwith for his opinion on that. Have not heard back, but I think that'll be some ongoing debate as to whether or not that money is free to how we wish or not.
Yeah, and just today, I did hear back from Mr. Beckwith and we'll forward that on to the council once we have that discussion. Thanks, Rick, for researching that. I think there is some misinterpretation from House Bill ninety-five to what was originally held in the resolution from the county commissioners, but I think the full intent of House Bill ninety-five was being as funds were gonna be downed, that the excess money could be used for projects that the communities wished to use them for. We just need to make sure everybody's on the same page at this point. Mr. Stith, Representative Stith had stopped in to see me about it and basically said, "You know, the intent of how ninety-five was, House Bill ninety-five was to use the money for projects that you feel are necessary, not necessarily the maintenance and operations of those on the agenda." So really, I think we're gonna have to make a decision. Home rule is what we want to use those funds were and have some discussion on what that resolution was, what by the county commissioners. Rick, I don't know if you wanna chime in on any of that or not.
Mayor, would you like?
Yeah, why don't you just go through the memo at this point?
I don't have the memo. But I do have the memo. Essentially, research questions asked the issue of whether or not the city will, or what authority the city disclaims. Excess tax funds. And the public will view that, open the act, change the statute. Second, first. The resolution of the county said exactly what the city said, essentially said, the excess funds. To maintain the construction of the water label project. Then, each one of the individual entities that participate in the excess tax, including us, will. Each pass their own resolution. Now, in our resolution, we don't specify what is to be happened on resolution required by the statute. That any resolution passed authorizing that also has to make a decision for expenditure of excess fund that are gathered or passed. Do you look at each of the individual resolution passed by each of the cities and estimate correctly? All of those resolutions, Exhibit A, their resolution. Exhibit A to their resolution is the county resolution. And each of those resolutions essentially say that it's to be a resolution, it's Exhibit A, a resolution, and it is essentially adopted by reference. And they put a question to the county, a question the county passed that resolution, particularly asking the county to pass the actual resolution. Problem with that is that resolution, Exhibit, not attached to the resolution, at least not due in record of the city, the resolution, county, not in fact attached. On the way to the city, the matter of which they reported. Exhibit A, the preference has been attached to the city. To that, it was not attached by any. Now, I've got that, I have no idea. I did not review the county, or rather, the county's only county position, but the way. Also, the city, if that had been attached, then I think argument could be made that we were bound by the county resolution because we adopted it, particularly by reference. Again, attached, because it was not attached with the county. Ultimately, the city of Rock Springs didn't fail to specify the excess funds expended, thereby, it was a patient step. So, one hand, one could argue that, well, it says that we incorporated it. So we don't know what that resolution was intended for, but I disagree with the order of course. Because it wasn't attached, the council at that time had nothing of actual consideration when they passed the resolution. All the, all the participants, the back. And people, actually people, out. Ultimately, question whether the county could spend the funds, despite the statute specific to happen by first. Now, interestingly, right now, there is absolutely no statute or provision that deals with what happens after. We receive these excess funds presently, but aren't any spaces attached. Now, it might, that the statute requires that all the individuals pass the resolution that not only provides for the, for the tax, but also for providing how those excess funds were expended. And our resolution failed to do that, but the statutes presume.
If you haven't memorized.
So ultimately, it really comes down to a fluke. The reason that the city is not bound, in my opinion, by the resolution, has been simply been, actually attached, referenced in our resolution, which wasn't ever.
Well, I participated in the work on House Bill ninety-five and, you know, sometimes we're our own worst enemy when it comes to these situations, but the full intent was for each municipality to utilize those funds for projects that they needed because the legislature had reduced the revenue stream to the cities. So we need to look into that and make sure everybody feels comfortable with that because we do have some projects that are coming before us that that is either going to make or break those decisions. So I will share that, let everybody read through the written version of what you just expressed and have some discussion with it before we move forward. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. West. Do you have any other?
No, just wanted to drill that out for you in the next draw-in meeting tonight.
Appreciate that. We knew that was, we knew that was out there longer and then Mr. Beckwith just finished that up today and was getting ready to pull the trigger to share that with everyone when we were reviewing it and discussing it. But take a look at it, read it, and then let's get together and talk about the plan forward. With that, I don't remember where we were. I believe that we did, we actually did approve council committee and board reports as amended. We'll include Councilor West. We had a motion of second and all approved. Is that correct? Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record show no opposed. And this is gonna bring us on to our correspondence section. We have item number one, the Joint Powers Water Board meeting agenda for March twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Number two, the two thousand eighteen Abel Hands Annual Report. Counselors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Tate? We do have a motion to accept the correspondence and place on file. Do we have a second? We do have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. It's gonna move us on to the bills and claims section of our agenda. Counselors, item number one, the bills and claims for April second, two thousand nineteen.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve the bills and claims for April second, two thousand nineteen.
We have a motion to approve the bills and claims for April second, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I'm staying.
Let the record show. And item number two, the salaries for March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Counselors?
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show, no opposed. This is gonna bring us on to our new business section of our agenda. Counselors, item number one, the request from the Department of Engineering and Operations and Public Services for permission to fill a vacant wastewater plant to operator one position at the water reclamation facility. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
We do have a motion to approve this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Records show no opposed. And item number two, the request from the Police Department for permission to fill a vacant animal control officer one or two position. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Savage?
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And item number three, the request from the Police Department for permission to apply for the two thousand nineteen State Homeland Security Program grant. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number four, the request from the KD Foundation for a road closure on South Maine for their twelfth annual Color Rush Walkathon on May fourth, two thousand nineteen, from ten AM to two PM. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Records show no opposed. Item number five, the request from International Days Incorporated for a sponsorship of the two thousand nineteen International Day in the amount of ten thousand dollars and for waiver of the Parks and Recreation Park rental fee in the amount of one thousand dollars. Counselors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Chalata? We have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Let the record show. Item number six, the request from Santa Fe Trail Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Gillespie Family Reunion on June twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, from twelve PM midnight to midnight at the Bunnings Hall. Counselors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Tate? We have a motion to approve this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And then item number seven, the request from Black Rock Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Sonia Riscus benefit on April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, from six PM to eleven thirty PM at the Youngard Heart Senior Center. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second? Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number eight, the request from Wild Horse Saloon for a liquor catering permit for the wedding of Cody Phillips and Stephanie on June fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, from noon to midnight at the Sweetwater County Events Complex. And it's gonna require the approval by the Green River City Council as well. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And item number nine, the request from Linpie Incorporated Doing Business as Bombers Sports Bar for permission to extend their serving area for a kick stands-up for summer charity event on July thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, from one PM to ten PM. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve that request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second? Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Let the record show. Let the record show, and we are going to move on to resolutions. Councilor's item number one under resolutions, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four zero.
A resolution accepting and approving an addendum to the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty collective labor agreement between the city of Rock Springs. Firefighters local fourteen ninety-nine IAFF and authorizing Timothy A. Como. Mayor of the city of Rock Springs and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk. Of the city of Rock Springs to execute said addendum on behalf of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Chalata.
Resolution twenty-nine dash forty.
Councilors, we have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash four zero, is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called, roll call. Or a bell.
Counselor Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate. Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes, and I would, uh, like to commend the team and, uh, the firefighters for working together to get, get that wrapped up. On to the next. Item number two, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four one.
A resolution accepting and approving a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Farmers market promotion grant application between the Wyoming Business Council and the city of Rock Springs. Authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said grant application on behalf of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilwoman Windorf.
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash four one.
We do have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen forty-one, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter. Windorf.
Yes.
Tate. Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number three, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four two.
A resolution accepting and approving ASO group plan changes with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Wa- of Wyoming. And authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor to execute said ASO group plan change on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-two.
We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen forty-two, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call on the resolution.
Counselor West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number four, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four three.
A resolution authorizing and directing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to accept and approve a budget revision. For the budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-three.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen forty-three, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Halter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate. Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata. Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number five. Resolution two thousand nineteen forty-four.
A resolution accepting and approving a ball field concession stand agreement with Linda Urban. Doing business as Jerry's concession and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash four four.
We have a motion to approve resolution two thousand nineteen forty-four, do we have a second? Second has been called, roll call.
Counselor Windorf.
Yes.
Tate. Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. It'd be better if I was doing business as Ben in Jerry's. Um, item number six, resolution two thousand nineteen forty-five.
A resolution accepting and approving a concession stand rental agreement with the city of Rock Springs Little League. And authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Tate.
Move to approve twenty nineteen forty-five.
We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen forty-five, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Item number seven, resolution two thousand nineteen dash forty-six.
A resolution accepting and approving amended grease interceptor sector control policy and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming. And Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said amended policy on behalf of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-six.
We have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash four six, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate. Mary Como.
Yes. And item number eight, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four seven.
A resolution accepting and approving a job description for the position of deputy city clerk at pay grade forty-six for the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Chalata.
Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-seven.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash forty-seven, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes, and with good cause, she doesn't have any sharp objects and she's out of our range, so. Item number nine, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four eight.
A resolution accepting and approving the twenty nineteen wildland fire management annual operating plan. Authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs to execute said bla- plan on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-eight.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen forty-eight, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Chalata.
Yes.
Savage. West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. And item number ten, resolution two thousand nineteen dash four nine.
An amended resolution accepting and approving the job description for the position of director of engineering operations. Public services at pay grade eighty-six for the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counselor, what is your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-nine.
We do have a motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash four nine, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call on the resolution.
Counselor Savage.
No.
West.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. Councilors, with that, we're going to move into our ordinances section of the agenda. And ordinance number one, two thousand nineteen dash zero seven on third reading.
Do you want me to read the whereas?
Can you? Yeah.
An ordinance amending article three two of the ordinances. Ordinances of the city of Rock Springs entitled offenses concerning public morals and decency. Whereas e-cigarettes are rapidly emerging and diversified classified devices typically deliver nicotine flavor, flavorings and other addictive. Users via an inhaled aerosol, these devices are referred to by a variety of names including. E-sigs, e-hukas, mods, vape pens, vapes and tank systems and. Whereas the United States Surgeon General has concluded that e-cigarette use among youth. And youth adults has become an increasingly public health concern that electronic cigarette aerosol is not harmless and that they contain. Harmful and potentially harmful constituents, including but not limited to nicotine and. Whereas the national academies of science, engineering and medicine have found conclusive evidence that other nicotine. The number, quantity and chara- characteristics of potentially toxic substances emitted from e-cigarettes are highly. Variable and dependent on product characteristics, including devices and e-liquid characteristics and how the devices operated. And whereas the government.
Mr. Matt, excuse me, one minute. So, so what we're trying to do here, because there's, some of these are going to get really long and we're trying to change our process into, uh, um. Providing a little more information on what we're doing with the ordinances. But usually the last paragraph that you're getting to is usually, don't you think, Councilman Zadi, that really what we're trying to do here? So when we get to those and they're going to be, uh, a page or two long, if, if we get back to the. Last paragraph that you're coming to right now, go ahead.
I find Matt's voice feathers. Feel free to take it out.
Go ahead, start from the beginning then. I just think these, uh, what we're trying to do is just offer some information, but that, there's, there's a lot of information that really don't, don't apply, so hit the last paragraph.
My apologies. Whereas the governing body of the city of Rock Springs has determined that certain provisions of its ordinances regarding offenses concerning public morals and decency should be amended to prohibit. The sale or gifting to and the use of possession of so-called electronic cigarettes and their constituents by minor children under the age of eighteen. Whether or not they contain nicotine or tobacco products.
Good, so what my thoughts are in the future, um, other than having Mr. McBurnett read that is maybe underneath the ordinance, put the last paragraph on the agenda, if that's okay with everybody. Basically, it's telling what, what, um, the ramifications of the ordinance are. So we'll, we'll tweak that and, um, and move forward with that, with that, counselor, what's your pleasure?
Your honor.
Councilman Savage.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Beckwith for putting this together so quickly and correctly, thank you.
Certainly welcome.
I move to approve ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero seven.
Uh, councilors, uh, we have a motion to approve, it's on its third reading, roll call.
Second.
Second.
A second.
Oh, second, I'm sorry. Second, okay, roll call.
Counselor West.
Yes.
Alter. Windorf.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Chalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Mary Como.
Yes. And item number two, second reading, ordinance two thousand nineteen dash zero eight.
An ordinance amending article three five of the ordinances of the city of Rock Springs entitled to main control and regulation of animals. Whereas the governing body of Rock Springs finds that abandoning an animal should be charged as a criminal offense punishable by jail, by a fine in jail.
Perfect. Perfect. Item number three, ordinance two thousand nineteen zero nine, first reading.
An ordinance amending article four thirteen of the ordinances of the city of Rock Springs entitled Tree City USA. Whereas the governing body of the city of Rock Springs has proposed amendments to article four thirteen before and has given them careful review and consideration.
Okay, that explains that, that's Mark, did you want to say a few words on that?
Good deal.
Okay, councilors, before you also in the ordinance section, you have before you, um, uh, our infamous, um. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero four, and after, uh, fairly lengthy thought of, uh, uh. Where we are today, um, how we got to this point, I, uh, applied, uh, a veto to this ordi- ordinance. And, uh, uh, in all due respect, I feel that we got off track from the original intent of. Just removing the wording from the HR, uh, director position, so with that. Uh, I believe, um, what you would need to do is take a vote to override the veto or allow the veto to. To, to run through and we would start over on the ordinance. So what's your pleasure? Yeah, it basically, if you don't do anything, then you didn't act on it, it's going to be vetoed and would you start over again? So is that correct?
Uh, yes, if anything, um, council, I'm working. Vetoed, uh, I don't know, we start over. Politics. Only those new person can only move.
Where we started from the beginning. Then we'll have three readings to work on. Correct? Everybody okay with that? Okay. Appreciate that, and, um.
Clarify, so the, the vote will be, uh, you'll be voting in favor of the ordinance as it was. Council. Coming here. Eric, my vote itself. Forty-one, six.
So.
Five of eight out of.
So, so you don't really need to, everybody's in agreeance to allow the veto to bring back your, we don't need to vote or. By rule of order, we could inter- entertain a motion to, uh, override the veto and see it fail, but I think everybody's on the same page, so.
Can we, I mean, would, would it take a motion and then just not a second, or what would the motion be?
Well, I think.
Yeah.
So it simply make a motion to approve the amendment. As written and passed last.
Correct, yeah. So Councilman, let's move in that direction, what's your pleasure? Councilman Chalata. And is there a second? Okay, it's going to die for lack of a second, I appreciate that, we'll rework the ordinance. I believe, um, it's early yet, we could stay. But with, uh, with no further business to come before the governing body, this meeting is adjourned.